Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 22, 2015 budget hearing. This is our second budget hearing with the intent to adopt the final budget. At this time, we're going to stand for the pledge of allegiance and then we'll move into the agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I just would like everyone to know that we do have a full board here present. Commissioner Bustle is present on the phone. Is that correct, Larry?
He has a delay. I told him to mute. It's a three-second delay.
Well, he was trying to mute his phone, but we will make sure that he's there. There?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. All right. Larry's present and accounted for, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to staff and they can get through the process.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight is the second public hearing, statutorily required. We started this budget process on May 28 and we delivered the recommended county administrator's budget to the board. We had a number of workshops during the month of June, including a public hearing for the public to come in and comment on the budget that was under consideration. We moved into July. We reconciled the flagged items from the month of June at that July 30 workshop and the board set the tentative millage rate for trim purposes. We had a couple of more workshops in August going over compensation and other issues. And that set us up for last Tuesday and this evening, the two required public hearings where the public can come comment on the budget and the proposed millage rates. Again, this is the second of two public hearings. Our budget process is a two-year budget process. We have the budget for fiscal year 16 before you and the planned budget for 17. We've been through both. We're going to take you through, Jen's going to take you through, a couple of important slides about the tax rates and the rollback rate, and I think I'll turn it over to her and then if you have any questions before we hear from the public, we'd be happy to answer them. Jen?
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The first item of information is we're going to describe that the percentage of additional property taxes that'll be generated by the growth in the tax base exclusive of growth from new construction is also referred to as the increase in revenue over the rollback amount. In this budget that we're going to go through these slides, the proposed budget of Manatee County, while the overall tax rates are not increasing, the aggregate increase over rollback percentage is 7.17 percent. The slide you have before you is reflective of the revenues by source that will be received within your budget. Total budget, net budget, is $564 million with 32 percent coming from property taxes, 36 percent charges for services, intergovernmental at 9 percent, other taxes at 6 percent, with licenses, permits, fines, and miscellaneous at 17 percent. The next slide before you is the uses by function, where each of those items are categorized by the Florida chart of accounts. You can see general government at 13 percent, public safety 27 percent, the physical environment 26 percent, public transportation at 8 percent, human resources 4 percent, cultural recreation at 3, and capital outlay at 12 with other at 7 percent, again, for a total of a $564 million net budget. The overall unincorporated county tax bill, the millage for this year for 2016 will be 6.4046, the GO bond millage at .0280, MSTU for the unincorporated area, .6109, with the same millage as the prior year, 7.0435. For the municipal area tax bill, the countywide and the GO bond millage total, 6.4326, the same as the prior year, and we also wanted to illustrate Palm Air MSTU, which is a small one that you have, that the same rate as the prior year, .2546. The last slide is I thought it would be important for you to see that the total countywide millage, which is the countywide millage plus the voted, has been a stable 6.4 since '08.
That concludes our presentation, Commissioners. Unless there's questions, we would recommend proceeding to public comment.
Okay, great. And at this time, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. I've got a few folks signed up, but everyone will have an opportunity to speak. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record and you will be given three minutes to address the board on the budget issue that's before us tonight. First up, I have Alexa Najmi.
Hi, my name is Alexa Najmi, Manatee County resident. I would like to start by saying thank you for funding the Manatee County healthcare program. It is a program that has facilitated the health and well-being of countless Manatee County residents for the past three decades. I have personally had the pleasure of witnessing the positive outcomes and unbelievable turnarounds that these patients have had during their course of care in our outpatient department at Manatee Memorial. Continuing the good county healthcare program in our outpatient setting will allow for shorter inpatient hospital stays, reduce the likelihood of repeat ER visits, and allow patients to return to work, school, and family while still receiving care. To give you some insight on the tremendous success of this program, I have with me two Manatee County residents whose lives have been impacted and improved due to the assistance they were able to receive from the Indigent Care Fund.
I'm Lori Dalton and this is my husband, Tim Dalton. He was hiding on me. We received indigent care for him, and if it weren't for that county medical program, he wouldn't be standing here with me today. In July of '14, my husband was an over-the-road truck driver, an owner-operator. Any money that we might have had for insurance was spent on repairs on the truck and trying to keep the truck on the road. In August of '14, he had a bowel rupture and was sent into the emergency room. He was leaking sewage inside his abdomen, and that's a tragedy that no one can plan for nor expect and be able to account for. Without going into any of the gruesome details, he spent 19 days in a coma, 38 days in the hospital. When he was released, he should have gone to a rehab facility, but not having any insurance or the promise of Medicaid, he was sent home. But through the county care program, he was able to go to daily wound care, which, in the long run, saved his life. Understand that when Tim came home from the hospital, he had a hole in his abdomen large enough that you could hide a baseball in. And it was going to the wound care daily with the trained wound care nurses that he got his care, and they, after about 10 days, they noticed an odd smell that I probably would have missed, and they caught it and they found that he was leaking sewage again. And so after 10 days of being home, he went back in for five days and then he came back Those early days of wound care was just so critical to his survival and it's just so important. We again went to the daily wound care. We continued that through April of 2015. Doing quick math, that's about eight months that we went to daily wound care. And then at that point, Tim had healed to the point that he was able to be taken care of at home. It wasn't until sometime in January 2015 that he finally got approved for his Medicaid, and there's no way that without that county program that I would have my husband standing here with me today. We're blessed to have this program in place when we needed it. Our story is just one of many. Some may not be quite as dire as ours, but when somebody needs medical help, they need that help. We're asking for life-saving necessary medical treatment for someone who is unable to lay payment on the counter at the time they receive their care. Thank you for having that necessary care program in place when we needed it, and please continue that care on forward for others. Now, I have copies of my notes if you would like.
Sure, you can submit those.
With pictures so that you understand what my husband was like.
Okay. And give those to the --
Who I give those to?
Burke, right there.
Okay.
Ms. Vicki will take them for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you for coming forward. Next up, we have Kevin England.
My name's Kevin England, and I've been a Manatee County resident for 30 years and love the county, and I want to thank all you guys for doing a great job of what you do and also the availability of the hospital fund that, like she was just talking about, because the job I had at the beginning of the year, I had changed jobs for, basically, for more money and was promised insurance and blah, 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 I never got it. And Murphy's Law in between, I had developed a staph infection which required surgery. And, you know, it wasn't one of them things where I could just go to the hospital, get antibiotics, and go home. It was pretty bad. So after the surgery, it required another surgery after that, too, which, thanks to the hospital fund and everything, me being in there, I wouldn't be standing here right now, you know, talking either because, from what I understand, the percentage isn't very good for what I had had. But the hospital fund, you know, I think it's an asset to our community, like she was saying about assisting anybody else that needs it, because, you know, it could happen to anybody like us. There are so many people out there that, you know, are just one week, two weeks, a month away from not having insurance or losing a job or something like that. So, you know, we just, you know, are here to tell you, just, you know, keep it under consideration, and we do think it's an asset to the community. And thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Next up, Teresa Raw.
My name is Teresa Raw. I'm a longtime Manatee County resident, and I'm privileged to be the medical director for the emergency departments at both Manatee Memorial as well as Lakewood Ranch Medical Center. As you guys know, 60 years ago, Manatee Memorial was built by the county to provide services of healthcare to every Manatee County resident. And I want to thank you for the last 30 years and even though the hospital was sold, that you continue to support our facility. For both, for all of Manatee County residents, having the privilege of having two very good hospital systems that are for-profit hospitals, provide services to Manatee County, we're truly blessed to have the type of quality care we can offer to our residents that, in many instances, totally beats the type of healthcare that is provided in many other larger communities. It's with your support that we've been able to do that. By being able to build heart centers, trauma centers, obstetrical services, pediatric services, and things like that, our Manatee County residents don't have to travel very far to get top-notch care. So I'd actually ask you to continue to support that for us so that we can continue to provide that kind of care to all residents. It is a fallacy to believe that that funding, if it goes away, will affect only those people who have the inability to pay. Thankfully, our hospital corporations have brought in many, many, many qualified physicians and continue to do so at the cost of millions of dollars to be on call at our beck and need. So 24 hours a day, regardless of who you are and regardless of your ability to pay, those services are here for you. So I'd like to thank you for supporting us in the past and look forward to hoping that you will continue to support us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raw, for your service. Catherine Edwards.
Catherine Edwards, taxpayer, geophysicist. Per the financial management department, the county's headed towards a budget deficit in 2018, current spending levels continue. We have a PAO who's double-dealing with commissioners in the Florida Department of Revenue. We have a sheriff with policies that endanger citizens. We have a county department paying salaries and training for fire districts. We're borrowing funds from reserve and property values have increased by 8.3 percent, and it looks like operating millage rates are, will be increasing as well. We have a county administrator advising a 4 percent across-the-board salary increase, and we have commissioners advocating increase in millage rates. It looks like Manatee County leadership is failing the taxpayers. The PAO, the commissioners have approved pay raises but no new employees. He goes to the Florida Department of Revenue, and he gets three new employees but no pay raises. So in negotiations, he winds up with new employees and pay raises. The sheriff's office advocates helicopter pilots flying at night without position lights, deputies driving down the road without headlights on, LEOs are endangering public safety. Who's looking out for the everyday law-abiding citizen? What I'd like to propose is that we restrict pay increases to 2 percent, and for people making more than 75K, that there be no pay raises until the financial management department can show projected budget surplus.
Thank you. Next up, I have Tom Morris, maybe?
Morris.
Morris, I'm sorry, it's blurred at the end.
I'm Tom Morris, and I grew up here in this community. My father was a physician in this community. I've been a practicing otolaryngologist here for 24 years, former president of the Medical Society, former chief of staff, current board member of Manatee Hospital, but most proudly, I'm a patient advocate. I was a founding board member for We Care Manatee and have been on that board for 15 years, and I'm a current co-chair. This community was very fortunate to sell the hospital and get the 30-year corpus where we've had the break of not having to pay for indigent healthcare except from that fund. That fund is now empty. Your citizens, when they're the most vulnerable, when they're sick, counts on their safety hospital, safety net hospital, and disproportionate share hospital, Manatee Hospital, to do the bulk of the care. Manatee Hospital has 25 percent of indigent or uninsured. Down south at Sarasota, that's only 14 percent. If you look at the finances in 2012, Manatee Memorial's hospital was $4.7 million. That is a 2.3 margin, which is very small. Sarasota Memorial's profit was $70.1 million with a 16 percent margin. You gave or allotted $6.9 million to this, to Manatee Hospital last year, and in the intergovernmental transfer with the lip and the Medicaid buyback, it came back as 12.7. If you subtract that 12.7 from the 4.7 million profit, it's a loss. Manatee Hospital cannot continue in that fashion. A lot of citizens say UHS makes a ton of money, and guess what? They do. But McDonald's, Publix, any big corporation, if a single store is not making profits, they're not going to continue to support it. This hospital built the tower and they're bringing in great physicians and then also state-of-the-art equipment. Now, I'd like to go over a patient I saw just last week. 62 years old, has had a sore throat for several months. Saw his dentist, his dentist sent him to his primary. The primary did some lab work, sent him back to the dentist. Finally, he made it to my office. He has a stage-one oral cancer that I can cure with about a 90 to 95 percent success rate with an outpatient surgery. It has to be done somewhere. Where is that going to be? That needs to be done at Manatee Hospital, and that's the kind of patient that if they wait and go to the ER at an advanced stage, the outcome is not going to be near as good. So can this system be tweaked? Can it be changed, be more cost-effective, vertical integration, be more proactive and primary care, preventative care? Absolutely, it needs to be advanced and progressed. But we've got to stay with the current system. At this time, we need to do the right thing and continue to fund it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Jamie Johnson.
I'm a registered nurse and the director of orthopedic spine and patient experience at Lakewood Ranch Medical Center. I am a fifth-generation Floridian. My ancestors were and still are farmers in Duette as well as local fishermen. My grandmother worked as a nurse at Manatee Memorial Hospital. My father has owned a local printing shop for over 30 years. I graduated from State College of Florida and currently am on the alumni council there. I have previously volunteered at the One Stop Clinic. I am deeply rooted in the community and care about its physical and financial well-being. What most people do not know about me is that not long ago, I was a single teenage mother. As a result of some irresponsible choices in my teens, I was a mother of two by age 20. I found myself overwhelmed by the magnitude and responsibility of motherhood and feeling very much alone. I was poor and on multiple occasions had my water and electricity shut off. There were times when I had only one or two items in my pantry. My kids and I wore old clothes and my car wouldn't go in reverse, so I had to push it out of parking spaces. Despite these circumstances, I made a commitment to go back to school and decided I was not going to let teenage pregnancy define the rest of my life. During this time, I was too proud to show friends and family the extent of my financial woes or ask for help, although I suspect I didn't do too good of a job hiding it. Someone anonymously dropped Christmas presents off at my house for my children on a year that I could not have been able to afford to buy them very much of anything. My best friend brought over a carload of groceries one evening after going to my pantry for a snack and seeing that there was virtually nothing there. The Women's Resource Center provided emotional support to me, essentially free of charge. My employers worked with my school schedule and made sure I got some of the busier shifts to try to help out. The owner of my children's daycare gave me a discount. One of my landlords came by and lowered my rent one day, stating he knew economic times were rough and he wanted to help out. At a time when I felt all alone, in retrospect, I really had an entire community standing behind me and supporting me. During this time, my daughter rolled out of her bed one night and landed perfectly wrong, sustaining a clavicle fracture. I took her to the emergency department at Manatee Memorial, where we received medical care with dignity and respect despite my inability to pay. Although the treatment for a clavicle fracture is essentially to let your body heal on its own, she still needed x-rays, a physician exam, a sling, and pain medication. The bill totaled over $1,000. I was unable to pay and needed assistance. How ironic that today I am working for the same company. Through all of these experiences, I have been able to gain a unique perspective of the community and healthcare system within. I have been on the receiving end of community assistance. I also work in healthcare and have seen the cost of treatment. Last, I am a taxpayer. I believe that Manatee Healthcare Systems has a strong commitment to serving our community as demonstrated by the massive amounts of care that they provide to community members who are experiencing difficult periods in their life. I'd like to thank you for the support of their efforts over the last 30 years as well as your continued support of their program.
Thank you for coming forward. Lynda Neely.
This morning, I asked you about this document right here. The, you know, you, we do not have a special taxing district for medical care like Sarasota. So in one half, in one way, we are not like them at all. But the law, the case law that I was talking about this morning that Mr. Palmer gave you the case, the pellet case on, the judge said that the hospitals do have the responsibility to give emergency medical care at the ER. And I understand that this is a very difficult situation. I've asked this board to ask the Attorney General, was the depletion of the corpus legal? There was a contract that this, the county board entered in when they took and sold the hospital and put the money in investments and that they were going to sell, just utilize the income that was generated by that corpus. Instead of doing that, the county commissioners, over the decades, elected to deplete the fund in violation of the contract that went along with that sale, where you put it in a contract that you would save the balance of money and only spend the interest. The Attorney General will give you that opinion free of charge. Nobody on this board will ask that. Not one of you. It only takes one, not all of you, only one of you, to request that opinion. So we talk about trust, and as I stated this morning, Mr. Hunziker said that Sheriff Stube asked for $2.5 million for freezer space at the port. Sheriff Stube says he did not. That is his final answer. So what is the purpose of the $2.5 million that Mr. Hunziker presented to you and the public? What is that for? When an answer does not come forward for that question that was generated by the speech of the administrator, you break the trust of us, the taxpayer. You are getting an increase in money because you didn't use the rollback. Property levels did go up, which means you are getting more money and you are spending every penny of that. And the TRIM notice states that when we have questions, this hearing is for us to ask our questions of you and to get answers. And I think that's going to be another year in a long succession of years where I'm not going to get the questions answered from this board or from this administration. So I understand the needs of people. I grew up in Michigan, didn't know I was being disabled, but lived in a canvas tent for four and a half years in, outside of Lansing, Michigan. No family, freezing, and I think the taxpayers deserve an answer on those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last person I have signed up to speak. If others would like to ask questions, make comments, address the board, now is your time. This is an opportunity for you to come forward. Please state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the board with your comments and your questions.
Yes, good evening. I'm Dr. Conard, resident of Manatee County. I wanted to point out a budgetary item that I would like to have you take a look at before the final budget is completed, and it has to do with the infrastructure needs in the East County. When the decision was made in the late '60s for the county, excuse me, to go into the ambulance business, we put together an infrastructure that has been a collaborative alliance that stayed in place for over 40 years. One of the reasons we've enjoyed such excellence in the, in our EMS is because the commissions have always put forward the infrastructure we need, the education, equipment, and supplies. Out east, we've got a time response that's way out of line. If you look nationally, the response time is thought of as eight minutes as being acceptable. The vast majority of the county, you do much better than that. But in the Maiaca area, you're between 11 and 15 minutes. That's a life or death issue. That's something that I would like you to address, really, because it's in the, there's budgetary money, you don't have to change anything budgetarily, but you need to make an allocation to that particular item, or we're starting to erode the level of excellence in EMS that we should have. So my request of you would be to accomplish that, that infrastructure problem that's there right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the board on the budget that is being presented? Now is your opportunity. You will have three minutes.
Glenn Gablena, taxpayer, resident of Manatee County. Thank you for this opportunity. I'll go over some minor items first. Exhibit one, I was just, you know, just curious. Can you tell me who the secretary, can you spell the last name of the secretary? Does anybody know?
Please state your comments and then we'll address the questions afterwards.
Okay. Well, I mean, something that we've got $800,000, we ought to know, at least print the name, because I have no clue who these folks are. So, and the Sadowski fund. So, and the Sibowski Fund, I'd like to know where that went as well. I asked earlier this morning about the law library and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Hopefully, we'll, we'll get that as well. The most egregious thing that I have found, there have been groups of people that have come before you, previous to this year, the Millennium Group, the homeless vets, several groups that need housing. We have a housing problem here for the middle income and the low income. It is unconscionable that this county and this board sits on three million dollars, carried over from last year, and doesn't say one word to the millennials that were up here. What are we going to do about housing? You think somebody would have stepped up to the plate and said, hey, we got three million bucks, maybe we can give you a hand? It's unconscionable that we have that money and we're sitting on another. So what are the projects? What are the plans? How much are the grants? And what are we going to do about it? So that's my spin on that. As far as the hospitals concerned, they, they, they do a great job. Their ranking isn't that well, they're rated a C hospital, I believe. But that set aside, the, the, the pre-invention before they get to the emergency room should have been going on years and years ago. We, you saw, we wrote off five hundred thousand dollars in EMS bills every month. Half those people didn't need to go there. And of course, the hospital hasn't stepped up to the plate and said, you know what? This guy just wants a free meal and a bed, so he really shouldn't be here. There has been no pre-planning from the hospital. And as far as their contract with, with the county was, a lot of unanswered questions. I brought them up this morning. Their accountability and transparency, as far as payouts and bills and so forth, need to be adjusted. So everybody needs healthcare. I don't think it's, it's the taxpayer's job to do it. But I think there's a lot of money that we could be saving in the healthcare industry by intervention. And a toothache was a prime example. I mean, everybody should have dental care. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the board on the budget? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Okay, seeing no one else come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment There are a couple of questions that were specifically raised, and I would like to have those questions specifically answered. The specific question about the sheriff freezer, I did ask that question this afternoon so that we would be prepared to give an answer. It is a capital improvement project. It is, in fact, a county, because the county is required to maintain the facilities for the sheriff. So it's correct. It's not a sheriff request, per se. But, Mr. Administrator, could you perhaps?
Yes. This is identified in your capital improvement program under general government, specifically Project Number 6005227. And it's on page thirty-nine. It's the construction of a twelve thousand square foot metal storage building to house a freezer, storage, and dry goods storage at the Manatee County Detention Facility. Includes freezer, dry storage, and an office. The sheriff's office has identified this facility as necessary to replace leased freezer trucks to accommodate food storage needs for the facility. It is budgeted for a total of two million, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It's designed at a hundred and eighty thousand, construction at one million, eight hundred thousand, project management at one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. All those are budgeted numbers. This project will be designed, put out to bid, and the actual cost will, when incurred, will be available. It is all budgeted for the year two thousand and sixteen. And that's the sum and substance of the question of about what this was all about.
So where we have heard that this is a need for the sheriff, we have responded, because we have to provide the facilities for the sheriff. So that is where it is. And I certainly hope it doesn't cost that much to build that metal building, even with all those expensive freezers. But I think it's been explained, that's how we've budgeted it. And please stay tuned. Before any money is spent, clerk will make sure that we are only spending what exactly is shown to be required to do this project. The clerk is very good at making sure that we don't spend a dime more of taxpayers' money than we have to, because she won't let us. And then another question that came up was the affordable housing. I asked that question. Sorry, I just, question, you are absolutely right. And I even printed out my trim notice to see exactly what it said, to make sure that we respond pursuant to what it says in the trim notice. So it is the time to ask questions. So the affordable housing question came up about?
Three million.
Three million. I think that it is, I'm not sure where the three million came up. I see one point four million was set aside for a specific housing project, for affordable housing. And maybe you could address that, Mr. Administrator.
It is set aside in a fund by the Board of County Commissioners to pay the impact fees for affordable housing projects that come forward to the board, to give an incentive for affordable housing projects. It was specifically set aside by this board. It is there and available for that purpose. It is one-time money. It's not, it's carried over from year to year. It's not additive. It's the same money. If we don't spend it one year, we just carry it over to the next year. And it is available for stimulating affordable housing projects. If the board wants to revisit that issue, we can have a workshop, we can set an agenda item, but it is, at one time, an important issue with the Board of County Commissioners to stimulate affordable housing projects. During the recession, it wasn't all that big an issue, but housing is becoming an issue in the community again. And I would caution before you want to take that away and do something else with it, first and foremost, it is a one-time source of revenue. It's not ongoing revenue.
Okay, those are the questions I heard. Maybe you guys heard some others. Commissioner Ba.
Yeah, well, those, I had three questions, and you just handled two of them. Thank you. Maiaca, I, you know, interesting conversation. Dr. Conard, I thank you for bringing that up. I, I feel the same. It's a definite need in Maiaca. The response time is slower than a lot of other areas in the county. Mr. County Administrator, maybe you can help me. I'm not exactly sure that I understand what Dr. Conard was talking about with it being, just having to move money around to get that covered. Can you tell me what he might be referring to?
Well, I don't know what he's exactly referring to in moving money around. We have a lot of the money. You have funded an additional EMS unit in the community to reduce response times and future demands as, as the community continues to grow. Mr. Smith, our new Public Safety Director, continues to monitor the response times and the location of our crews, and will report to you regularly about response times. He met with you recently, and he talked about response times in the urban core versus the rural areas of the county, recognizing that in the rural area, the response times are not as quick as they are in the urban core. I think he indicated that most people know when they move out into rural areas, you're not going to receive the same level of service in EMS, in libraries, in parks, in fire stations that you do receive when you live in an urban area. But we continue to monitor that. We continue to move crews around in order to meet standards that have been established for both urban and suburban and rural areas, and will report to you. But at this point in time, he sees no reason for any changes.
I'll, I'd like to have a meeting set up with him to discuss that, because Maiaca, I can tell you, it is slow out there, and there's a lot of issues going on that we need to start taking a look at. One last thing on the budget that I just want to comment on before we go into more conversation is that, you know, our budget was up about fourteen million this year. And again, I'll, you know, indigent care came in at, what, six point nine, I believe? And I wish that the six point nine was out of the general fund and not reserves. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
It, it is out of the general fund. Could you please, and it's not reserves, it's budget stabilization funds that we have been spending all along. So if you could explain that, because there's, I asked this question this afternoon, because I wanted to make sure, because we used to call it budget stabilization fund, and it was funds that were set aside. Now we're calling it reserves. So if you could explain that, perhaps?
Yes. In, in past years, during the recession, we had what was called budget stabilization fund. It really wasn't a fund, it was a report that summarized reserves in four separate funds. The general fund, the MSTU fund, that's the Municipal Service Taxing Unit Fund, the library fund, and the Transportation Trust Fund. It took the reserves that were in excess of the board's established policy. Your policy states reserve of twenty percent. Any reserves in excess of that, we took and added together and called it the budget stabilization fund. But it was really a report that totaled up those excess reserves from the four different funds. When we delivered the budget this past May, we told you that we were going to stop doing that, because it was more important to talk about each fund independently. Because when you talk about it on a summary level, you could have three funds that were in good shape, one fund that was in terrible shape, but you'd never know it, because when you have a report that summarizes four together, you wouldn't see the problem fund. And we decided we would best be served, best serve you, if we reported on those reserves in each fund in excess of the twenty percent, and talked to you about how those reserves were being used, and we just called them reserves. We don't call them the budget stabilization, we just call them the reserves. Or one could say they're the excess reserves over the twenty percent requirement.
The, the reason I bring this up, because it is confusing, because it changed the terminology. In the previous budgets that we have seen, we have been spending, as part of our general fund budget, budget stabilization funds. We've been spending that. It's not like it was all sitting in a pot and not being used. In every budget that I've been participating in, that money has been spent. Now we're talking about spending it on a new item in this next year, talking about spending it on indigent healthcare. And, but it isn't a new pot of money that we're dipping into. This is one that we have routinely been spending out of. So to say all of a sudden, now we're dipping into reserves that we've never dipped into, I don't think is correct.
That would be correct. We have, since the recession, we have been spending down our reserves as our revenue from property taxes have declined because of two things. One is the decline of property values in the county, and the other is because of legislative actions in Amendment One that have limited the amount of revenue that can come in from property taxes. For example, people in this county that own homesteaded property, next year, your property taxes cannot go up by more than point eight percent. That was Amendment One, that said three percent for the Consumer Price Index. And the Consumer and Price Index has been established at point eight, and that's across the state of Florida. That's not just in this county, that's across the state of Florida. There were times before the Amendment One, and you can think back to the early two thousands, when budgets were going up by double-digit numbers, and homesteaded properties were going up in legislation, and was introduced to cap, first of all, legislation was introduced to put additional homestead exemptions, additional twenty-five thousand dollar homestead exemptions out there, to take it from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. And then the legislature passed and sent to the voters a proposal to cap the increase on homesteaded properties. That was at three percent. And so in the future, we won't be able to rely on property tax revenue as we have in the past. And those issues have reduced our property tax revenue, which requires us for the last six years, to draw down our excess reserves. And as the chairman's pointed out, we have been doing that. And the proposal is, if we can change the way we fund healthcare, we would recommend taking the money out of reserves and funding the new method for funding healthcare. Those will be brought forward to the board in the coming weeks and months. But again, it's just setting aside or recommending, setting aside a portion of those reserves for some healthcare expenditures to an amount yet to be determined.
Can I respond? Yeah, Mr. Ba, you're still at the floor.
You know, you can call it whatever you want. You can call it a budget stabilization fund, you can call it reserves. It's the monies that we have been meeting our budget with since we've been in a recession. The bottom line is, we know, and we've been told, that come 2018, we're in a deficit. We are spending the last bit of reserves slash budget stabilization fund, and we have no fix to this problem. It's, it's a Band-Aid. I, I think Commissioner Benak used that word at our last budget meeting. That's what concerns me. I feel like that we've wasted another year without a solution to this problem, and we're just digging ourselves deeper in a, in a bigger hole. So that is my concern. Not that I don't think it's a good cause, dag on right, it's a good cause, but we've got to figure out a way to really pay for it that's not going to, you know, hurt the county. I mean, I, I remember when the state was looking at this issue, and, you know, the House was on one side of the issue with Medicaid expansion, and, and the Senate was on the other. And, and the reason the House was against it was because they felt that the state couldn't afford it, they wouldn't be able to continue. So I'm just hoping, again, and I said this last year, and I'm going to say it again, we're starting a new year, October one. Let's find a solution to this problem. I'm asking the commissioners to help me with that. We need a designated fund. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Whitmore.
And you'll have to forgive me, I may have to cough. I started steroids, so I'm on a steroid thing right now. I had, got an upper respiratory going on. So there's just a few things. Glenn brought up the housing and affordable housing. Well, we spent a whole day on the land development code rewrite, and our presentation was a week or two ago. And the ideas that came from that were the corridor, forty-one corridor, on looking at what laws we can, how we can incentivize business to redevelop there, build affordable housing. And, but right now, the, the way our codes are, there's no way we can do it, and we recognize that. So we had a consensus of the board to move forward, just like we did the Southwest TIF. We, we know that this is the areas, there's a couple of areas in the county that we're going to start doing that, and it's redevelopment. It's going to be housing for the millennials, like Glenn mentioned, and others. And it's going to be something that, it's going to be a long process, but we're on the right track, and we have been addressing it. I had to state that. As far as the, the current infrastructure needs, I brought, I know Ed's brought it up, I brought it up at the last two budget meetings, we have great infrastructure for new development. What we don't have is maintaining of the current infrastructure in the county. I was in, I had to go to Sarasota last night, and I decided to go Twenty-Sixth Street. You go to Cortez Road to, all the way to Florida Boulevard, and it's like terrible. The roads are just bad, you know. I did notice they, they have speed, speed, electronic speed limits there. I don't, that was new, but it, we need our roads repaired on, in our, and there's areas in this county that definitely need it. So, and Ed said at a previous meeting that we're going to have to look at a funding source. So that's something that we're going to have to look at next year also, as well as the healthcare. And as far as the hospitals, and somebody said you have to take care of them, well, guess what? You don't. The Attila Law says life or limb, and everybody out there knows it, except, you know, a lot of people here don't realize it. The Attila Law says you only take care of them if it's the person's life or limb. So the, the lady and her husband that came up, he- he had a ruptured bowel. Yeah, that was probably life to have the surgery. Did they have to do probably weeks and months and months of wound care, probably in the hyperbaric chamber? That's, I'm sure that's what you did. If not, no, they didn't. That was a part of what the Indigent Care Fund paid to prevent him from crashing and burning and end up back in the hospital with sepsis on a vent, and then God knows what would have happened. The person that Dr. Morris just mentioned with the stage one turmeric on the throat, the hospitals don't have to treat them. That's not life or limb. But if he got to stage four and he couldn't breathe anymore, and you had to innovate him and had to go to surgery, that's different because he would have died. So this is the kind of preventive stuff, the Band-Aid stuff, and it's right. It has been Band-Aid. They've had a plan, but it's been Band-Aid for years. And I think the commission has totally recognized that we need to have a good plan. You've heard about the EMS program that they're looking at, the community EMS. That is a great program, innovative. I read in the paper that the health care providers in the community are excited to hear more about it. So that's great. But there was a Ms. Johnson that came up. I guess Johnson's printing, and if your mom's Martha, I know her. If not, then. But what's really shocking me is I'm sitting here 30 years later, and I was your age, sitting in the audience when they sold the hospital. And to see some, what surprises me, I don't know half the people in here, because they're all young nurses at the hospital. And it's really nice to see the story that you gave today. You put a name and a face on it. And you know, we hear, all we hear usually is indigence and disdain, you know, from the public when they come up for us. So it's nice to hear and put a name on the face that these people all, and the gentleman that came up, everybody had a job. Most people are one or two paychecks away of being in that place. So they all had a job, but what happened is bad fortune happened. The 4, the 1.3 million that Commissioner Sabatino brought up at the last minute meeting, she had brought up possibly, I don't know if eliminating it, but using that money, save it. And so I assumed eliminating it. And we got stats on that for the Your Choice program that we fund, and we fund about 335,000 a year. Manatee County has a team pregnancy prevention, and then Your Choice has one that we work in conjunction with the school board. Well, the team pregnancy, Manatee County ones, served 230 use. The Your Choice program served, or yes, used, served 4,425. And actually, as a commissioner on here for many years, that was a priority from the commission from Children's Services, we actually have statistically proven that we've brought down the birth rate of teenagers. So I don't support, and I would never support, eliminating that program. I, as you all know, will support the budget as it is today, and I just encourage strongly. I've told you before, this is my passion in life. It's not a soapbox. It's my, how I feel, and I'm not trying to, it's my heart and soul to take care of the less fortunate. I remember when Tom Morris used to, was in high school or maybe college, he used to make rounds with his dad daily, and if it wasn't him, it was his mother. And then he went to medical school. So I have deep roots to the medical community, and I intend to continue to represent him. Thanks.
Next up, Commissioner Smith.
Yes, Madam Chair. This morning, Glenn, I had addressed the concerns about the Affordable Housing Committee, because you're correct, and I stated when I got on here, we hadn't met in three years or better. You're a board member. I'm the chairman, the chair recommending, and I was appointed for that Affordable Housing Committee. Have not met. There's a lot of questions out there about affordable housing. I know I've had people come to my office concerning investing in affordable housing, so they need to be aware of the money that's available. You're right. We have veterans right down there now, homeless. They bring in some $1,600 a month, just don't have decent housing, can't afford to get anywhere to stay, can't put a deposit. They're moving closer downtown. If you come through here at nighttime, you'll see them sleeping downstairs. There's a crisis that's taking place, so I did bring that up. I told the county administrator I would like to meet with him concerning that, and so that's what I'm going to do. Dealing with the sheriff freezers, it was a picture shown as if the freezer was going to Port Manatee. Well, I don't want to confuse anyone. It's two Port Manatees. That's not the Port Manatee, the way the dock is located. The freezer going to the sheriff department out there where the jail is located. So that picture, I want to clarify that picture that was showed, looked like it was going to, out there. This is something that we discussed previously and before. Dealing with health care, I'm a supporter of health care. I know we need to find a way to fix the solution that we have now, but I'm a big supporter of it. Going through situation with my family members and stuff, and people who deserve to have some type of health. We have to be creative as a county commissioner and find a way to fund these. It's going to be very interesting this year with the workshops that we must have to deal with this. I also support Ma Anka. You got Ma Anka, you got Samoset, you got Rabonia, you got all these communities, Onika, that've been here historically for years. Whether they live out far or not, they deserve to have services out there for their constituents. So I'm going to be a big advocate for that. As the county continues to grow, add another 50,000 residents, we're going to need more services. So I suspect that we're going to be looking at more issues that we never thought we would before. Now, dealing with the budget processes, I mentioned in my last meeting, this is the shotgun budget for me. You almost by statute has to approve something. You just can't leave it on the table. And so there's a lot of questioning, a lot of you asked, that I don't think, out of order, asking those questions. Those are some of the things that I will look in as a county commissioner, to make sure that we scrutinize all budgets. Even the constitutional office, as you recall, questioned mostly every constitutional officer budget that was submitted. Most of them didn't give a presentation, and hopefully we'll change that, but they don't have to. But I also said that if they don't, we need to look at, do we give them the increase? The sheriff shows up, he takes the heat from right there. He explains his budget. He shows up to every meeting. So I don't think anyone else should not show up if he's showing up. He explains to us why he need it. He lays out the foundation why he needs it. He brings data. And so that's what all constitutional officers need to do. Or they shouldn't get an increase. I mean, we have no jurisdiction over them, but we don't have to give them increase if they don't give a presentation to the public. So we get the heat from them not giving us the presentation. And so I think that's something that we should look at. We shouldn't just rubber stamp anything. And the sheriff explains his budget. He sits here. If he can do it, all constitutional officers should be able to do it.
Good point. Commissioner D. Sebette.
Great. It's just like deja vu. Last week, last year, I'm totally in agreement with Commissioner Ball. You know, we are, as I said countless times, a caring community, and this is our year of transition. The, tonight, we're not voting on the line items for, in the reserves for health care, correct? Because we don't have plans. We don't have contracts. So we appreciate everybody coming forward. It's not that we don't give any money to indigent. We give millions of dollars to all different funds, whether it's coming out of the Children's Services Advisory Board money, or, and that's taxpayer money, or all these other funds. We Care, One Stop, we're funding all those programs. So to say we're not funding indigent care is kind of misleading. So we are all in favor of that. We are, you know, on board with that. As far as the affordable housing, I'm on board with Commissioner Smith. Our fund summary report, our budget report that I have fiscal year 16 under Affordable Housing Subsidy Funds, page 49, I don't know if you all have that. It's a book we had this summer. But it had fiscal year 14, 15, 16, and 17 for this affordable housing. Back in 14, there was a fund balance of 3 million, okay? Only 32,600 was spent that year. That kind of looks like it's admin staff money. Nothing else was spent. The following year, we started with a budget balance of 2.96 million. Again, the only amount of money that was spent was 65,000. Again, kind of looks like staff. Could be wrong. But then they took a million and a half, transferred it out to other funds, transferred to the general fund. So that left a fund balance of 1.3, 1.4. Again, the following year, only 70,700 was spent. So that's why we're here. That's the 1.3 or 4 million that Commissioner Smith's saying is in the fund balance. I guess the intent that the description says was to subsidize owner-occupied affordable housing by paying a portion of the impact fees on eligible properties. So again, we need workshop and to discuss if we're ever going to be utilizing this money.
Well, I think we had a, we have a housing plan. And I, when this question came up, I asked the same question this afternoon because my recollection is when we discussed the housing plan, we talked about this because there was concern about whether or not we should even be subsidizing single-family housing development. Even affordable housing seems to be doing just fine. The question was what, maybe rather than only, as our policy says, being able to spend impact fee, or subsidize impact fees for single-family housing, stretching it out to multifamily, maybe that's a better need. And we had a workshop, and we talked about that with the housing plan. Isn't that correct? And maybe we need to continue.
Maybe we need to have the discussion again. The funds there, it was part of the fund summary that you went over in June. If you would like to change that, I suggest in the next year, we have a workshop, and we can have that discussion.
Again, because in the last several years since I've been, we haven't spent any money on affordable housing in this arena. And then the money provided via transfer, you're transferring money from the general fund, unspent balances may be transferred back to the general fund. So if we're transferring this money that's being unspent back into the general fund, then we have a million four sitting out there back into the general fund. And again, I'm asking my last-ditch effort, if, I know Commissioner Ball and Commissioner Smith were in favor of last time of providing some relief to the sheriff's office. I'm sorry, I think when a constitutional officer who's elected official comes before us and said they need three more staff members because we have 50,000 new residents and thousands of new homes, and then the sheriff's saying that same information, and--
You want to make a motion?
I'm making a motion that we fund, he wanted 12, 10 deputies.
This is one-time money.
One-time money.
Not recurring money.
Well--
You're going to fund it for a year?
No. This, this budget is, it's like, to me, I'm like, it seems like a shell game. So you can find it in recurring, because I found it in recurring under that, those two line items for the reserves. And you said one was recurring. So wherever you want to take the money, you can shift it around. You're very good at that. So I, before I--
Sorry, I interrupted you. You had a motion.
Did you get a second?
I didn't, I didn't finish it.
Please finish.
I didn't finish it because I didn't finish what I was going to say first, because I wanted to say this first. I didn't ask, do the motion. Because I started making a little notebook of, just recently, and I asked the sheriff for some statistics. But then I've just been asking my assistant just to make a copy of articles from the paper that I keep forwarding to her each month. And I'm not here on my soapbox, but I'm saying, the violent crime is up 16 percent just this year alone.
Sheriff, Madam Chair, this is Larry.
Yes. Do you have a point of order?
Yes, I do.
What's the point of order?
Point of order is I suggest the absence of a second.
I didn't make a motion yet.
We're waiting for her to make the motion.
Make a motion.
She's supporting her motion, so we're waiting for a motion.
Want to make a motion?
Make a motion. And she was looking for a second. I heard a second. Therefore, all this discussion is out of order.
Do you want to make a motion and then see if you get a second, Robin?
And then you can talk about whatever you want.
Can I talk about it first?
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to fund the sheriff's office $1 million.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for discussion.
Okay. Violent crime is up. Heroin epidemics are up. Child removals are up from homes. The calls for service have increased. And, and you know what, crime knows no specific area, because I'll just include a few. Homicides up in Manatee County. The pastor was killed in Pride Park. The deputies investigated double homicide in East County. Three suspects sought in Palmetto. Detectives in Duette, Bradenton Apartment Complex, right at the line between Bradenton and Manatee County. So, you know, it knows no borders. And, you know, a man shot in Ellington. Palmetto High School shot. Brother shot in the convenience store. State College of Florida, a drowning of a child. Heroin epidemic. And just today, a bar on Oniko. So it's all over the county. We need more law enforcement officers.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Discussion.
Discussion. Actually, I was up on the board, so I'll go ahead and speak on this issue. I have been told that this is one-time funding that was specifically set aside for the subsidy of impact fees for affordable housing. That's what it was set aside for, and is not recurring money. I imagine what Commissioner D. Sabatino is, that we should be able to find the money. But the reality is that we are going to not have enough money to fund all the programs that we are funding currently. So if we grant an increase in staffing for the sheriff, we're going to have to find a way to cut something. It's, the reality is, and people can say, well, we don't need additional revenue in this county. But the additional revenue that we have gotten through the growth has not been from the people that live here. You've been capped at 0.8. I brought my own trim notice to make sure that I'm not the one paying this 8 percent increase in property values. It's the new folks. And maybe it's the new folks that should get some of the services. We heard that maybe they need more ambulance service. But we do know that we don't have enough funding to pay for road maintenance. We've never had a fund for that. We haven't had a fund for stormwater management. We don't have a fund for health care. So where I appreciate Commissioner, and we don't have a fund to pay for additional sheriff office, sheriff coverage. You know, that was a pretty depressing report. And we don't have a fund to pay for expansion of mental health care.
Discussion from Larry.
I think that's my concern, that yes, we absolutely need to address the issue of sheriff. How are we going to cover that? But we've got a lot of other issues that we have to address as well. And I'm not willing just to say that we're going to find this funding because it isn't evident right now. Larry, I'll go ahead and go to you next, and I'll go to my other folks on the board. Larry?
Well, I also feel that it's very easy to sit on the dice and say, we'll find the recurring dollars. But the reality is that I think if you're, if you're voting to, to fund a recurring item and you don't have the dollars in hand, then that would not be proper.
Can I--
Therefore, I don't think we should support this at all. You know, not to say that there couldn't be a need, but it's easy to sit up there and, and to recount all the crime that's happened in the county. But it would be very difficult to tie every crime to, to say that that crime could, would not have been committed if you had more deputies. I don't believe that's, that's correct. So therefore, I urge my commissioners to vote this down. However, we, in the future, we need to, and see if, in the budget process, when we have an opportunity to think through these things, whether or not it's a valid requirement and have the recurring dollars to fund it. But tonight's not the night.
Commissioner Whitmore.
Well, and I voted to increase the mileage to fund the sheriff, and three of us did, three of us didn't, and it died. And so now, you want to take it out of other funds that need to be funded. At the last meeting, Robin, you had said, and the only reason why I'm bringing this up, I wasn't going to bring this up, but I had probably 15 employees come up to me. And I kind of heard it, but I didn't pay attention. But let me tell you, the employees did. You brought this up at the last meeting, and then Ed mentioned, well, we've committed that we've got to take care of the employees, the compression for the other salaries of the employees. And you made a comment, well, I think people with more guns are more important at this time. And the employees heard it.
I never said more important.
Okay, well, I was told this in the elevator. I heard it, but it didn't bother me because I know how we get up here, and that's fine. But you know, the employees heard it. We have 1,700 other employees that they need positions to. Now, the healthcare, Ed, we're setting aside 6.9 and the 1.3. The 1.3 has probably been going towards the healthcare fund for about 20 years, correct? Or as long as anybody can remember. And for those of you in the public that don't know, the 1.3 has been from our, it's been a recurring revenue to go towards healthcare to match the lip funding. And this year, it went away, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what we're doing is they would have normally gotten 12 to 14 million dollars from the state. This year, they get what we give them here, correct? So that's the 6.9 and the 1.3. I'm not about to give that to anybody. And I, and like Larry said at the last meeting, we've been talking about this from May, and I totally respect everybody up here, and we all have pretty good relationships. But we've been talking about this since May, and it's come down to the wire. And I'm not going to gerrymann the budget on the last night and decide what we're going to do. So when it comes time after we're all done, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the recommended budget, but I don't think it's time yet.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor. So let's address the motion on the floor. Commissioner Smith, the motion on the floor is for finding revenue to pay, did you have a number, Robin, in the motion? Was there a...
A million.
She said a million.
One million.
Madam Chair, I don't know where the funds would come from. I think Commissioner De Sabatino, you know, she fought the fight. I fought the fight.
So did I.
Commissioner Whitmore fought the fight.
And we lost.
Just $11 increase a year.
Increase that millage, we did wrong.
Less than a dollar a month. We could have took care of the sheriff.
We did set the millage already, so let's...
No, I got to clarify, I got to clarify.
Did set the millage already.
I know, I'm going to clarify. That's when it took courage to do that. The sheriff would have been funded, emergency service, security for park and recreation, mine, all of that, just $11 increase. The sheriff would have got everything that he wanted, and we, the employees would have got what they wanted. We decided not to do that. I lost, but I fought. You fought.
I fought.
You fought. Now, it's hard for me to vote for some not knowing where the money's coming from. That's what hurts me. I don't know where it's coming from. I have no doubt he need additional deputies. Right around in Palmetto now, it's dark, they're selling drugs, they're running down the streets robbing and everything else. He's got it under control, and I get that. Now, I won't support the budget every year for the sheriff. It makes no sense to me telling you that. But there's a need out there, but you fought the fight.
We lost.
We lost!
Okay, Commissioner Ball.
Yeah, thanks. You know what, I can't even believe we're sitting here having this conversation. You know, with, with all due respect, this is a budget meeting. This is the time to discuss these things. You know, it's, this is not, we're not talking about healthcare right now. And you know what, we're not even talking about increasing the millage right now.
Right, no, we can't.
Well, you know, no, we can't. And if we're going to talk about doing that, we need to have a major workshop and really get into the nitty gritty before we make that decision. I'd have a hard time voting to increase the millage because I'd want to know that every other dime we're spending, that we're doing the best with it we can, and I don't feel that way right now. So, you know...
Madam Chair, discussion.
Wait, wait, just a second, let Vanessa finish, and then we're going to call the vote. I do believe that we do have a need for the sheriff. A lot of it, you know, if you think about it, I mean, you've got to look at the crime rate that's going on in the county. It's very important. Has to do with people that already live here, people that are moving here, economic development, our economy, everything surrounding those issues. The crime rate in this county has something to do with it. So I can see where it's going. I think it's a shame. I think it's a mistake. But that being said, I did second it to see where everybody else was going to be at, and everybody else is exactly where I thought they'd be. Thank you.
Larry, you can make a motion to call the vote if you want.
No, I, I'm on the board still.
I want to make a comment.
Okay, well, Robin and then Larry.
Okay. The, the 1 million is recurring. I pointed it out last time, I'll point it out again. On that line item for 1.3 is recurring money.
It's a healthcare recurring that we've spent in the past?
It's still recurring money. You can change it, you can move it in a different...
Clarify for everybody where you're pointing to.
It's from the healthcare line item, 1.3 million. I'm asking for one of that. And then we just gave you a source of non-recurring money, the 1.4 that we're not using, and then you can put that back in the general fund and use it for the healthcare. You can do that. So there is a recurring stream. Shame on you, Commissioner Whitmore. I'm sorry, I never said that the county employees weren't any better than the sheriff's. I said that they're carrying a gun, they're different. And the 1 million is not going to their salary increases at the sheriff's office, it's going for more staff. And I didn't lose, the people in Manatee County are losing because some people up here are really stubborn.
Yeah, I know. Commissioner Bussell.
I have a comment, I made a comment last, last Tuesday that we have a process that we're following. If, if this motion passes, then it's essentially a vote that says that we do not have confidence in our process. Therefore, you know, we need to change it if we don't, if we aren't going to follow the process. But you don't go all the way through a budget cycle with all the hearings and workshops and discussion that we've had. And we've evaluated factors, this and that, and, and we were not under pressure, we did the, made our recommendations, and it wound up here tonight in the form of a budget that we've already, we passed it last week, as a matter of fact, last Tuesday. And so to go into it and pick it out piece by piece this evening, I think is a travesty. And as I say also, we need to change the system if we're not going to use it, if we're not going to follow it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Everybody has, has had a chance to address this motion. I would like to take a vote on the motion unless we have more discussion on the motion. If you want to talk about the budget afterwards, the process, we can do that. But let's try to vote on the motion that's on the floor. If you all are okay, ready to go?
Yeah, I was going to call a question, that's why I hit my button, so I'm ready.
All right. All those in favor of the motion?
Can you read it?
Yes. The motion was made by Commissioner De Sabatino to fund the sheriff's office $1 million.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Chair votes nay, motion fails. Okay, we have other business before us we have to act on, we have recommendations, you have resolutions before you.
The millage is next, right?
Yeah, where's the paper, or is it just on our e-agenda?
We have, in your agenda...
Yeah, I know.
Madam Chair.
Have first off, the announcement, excuse me, I skipped you guys. You make your announcement, then we'll go.
It's most critical, I do, thank you. The aggregate millage rate for the Manatee County Board of County Commissioners for fiscal year 15 to 16 is 6.8488 mils. And the change from the rollback aggregate millage rate of 6.3906 mils for the operating millage is hereby determined to be a 7.17% increase. Again, this is not an increase in the overall tax rates.
Yes, it's due to the fact that we have had an increase in the overall values, which as I said before, isn't the existing homeowners that have saved our homes, they're capped at .8. It's the new development and the commercial that have created that large increase. But we have kept the overall millage rate the same as it was last year and the year before.
Eight years. Madam Chair?
Eight years.
We're also not, and that's not totally accurate because it's also resales. So once a house resells, so it's not just new construction. Once a house resales, then the value goes up, and you start over, the new base, so...
Thank you, that's correct.
And, and resales are higher than new home sales.
Okay, that's a good point. Resales, yes, you, once you buy a new home, you have to get bumped up and start over, according to the law. Okay, so we have the announcement of the millage rate. Can I have a motion to set the final millage rate?
Make a motion to, for the adoption of the final, final millage rates, B-16-004 Resolution, FYI 15 to 16.
Second to that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. Larry, did you vote aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes six to one. That's just for the millage rate.
So what was the vote?
Six to one.
Six to, okay.
Next up is adoption of resolution for final Manatee County budget.
I move to adopt the resolution B-16005 Annual Budget for Manatee County.
Second to that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay. All those opposed, nay?
I'm sorry, I'm going to need two nays.
You jumped the gun. Larry, I didn't hear your vote?
I voted aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes five to two. Last, we have to adopt the final budget for the Manatee County dependent, dependent special taxing districts. We have a motion to do so.
Motion to adopt Resolution B-16-006.
Second.
Our motion by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Chappie. All those in favor of the adoption of Resolution B-16-006 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those...
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Chair votes aye, motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. And then last is our capital improvement program for fiscal years 2016 through 2020.
Adoption, I move to approve adoption of Resolution R-15-155 for Manatee County Capital Improvement Program fiscal years 2016 through 2020.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Chair votes aye, motion passes unanimously. And that completes our public hearing for tonight's budget. Carol, did you want to make a comment about?
I just want Ed to clarify because I've heard a lot of stuff tonight, and I want everybody to know, the commissioners were correct, and, and I think this needs, only because I think it needs to go, everybody's watching this, everybody's here. The monies that were put in the budget for healthcare are in a fund, but the providers of this money or the receivers of this money have to do, sign a contract, and they have to meet the contact, contract requirements. And if they don't, they don't get reimbursed, correct?
Well, there's no contracts, starting October 1st. We have no contracts.
Right, exactly.
No contracts.
Well, they have to do it.
No contracts yet.
And there'd be a two-step process. First, the board would have to approve a budget amendment to take the money out of reserves and put it into a spend appropriation mode. And secondly, the board would have to approve contracts with providers that meet the terms and conditions acceptable to the board.
Because I've had a few citizens ask me, and I just wanted to make sure it was clear.
Yeah, we already voted.
I had a question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner De Sabatino? I'm sorry.
Did we, did we vote to reimburse the, give the sheriff his money back and supervise the election, is that's all?
Yeah, nobody pulled it. He gets all his money.
He gets that back. Commissioner De Sabatino?
Yes, and Commissioner Bussell brought up about the process, which I disagree with his comments. You know, we meet over, over the, before our recess, and we have these series of meetings that, you know, are hours and hours on time and 1,400 pages. And not everyone agreed with everything in that budget. So we took, and I took, the recess period off to go through that, and I came up with items. Now, we can't talk outside of our public meetings, so I'm bringing these up during these budget meetings because it has to do with the budget. And to say that this is etched in stone in the spring and summer, and we can't discuss it, then why are we having these meetings? Why don't we just come with a rubber stamp and stamp it? If we can't change anything, then what's the point? We could just adopt the budget before the break, and we'd be done with it. So, you know, we really need to think about this, and that, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Well, and I, just to follow up on that comment, I will just say that it's pretty clear that we're going to have to start early. We've got a lot of budget holes, certainly. There was a lot of support. I don't think anyone does not support the sheriff needing additional funding in his budget, as I've said previously. We've got a lot of holes. And, you know, if people don't want to allocate any additional funding for these things that we have holes in, then you have the opportunity to tell us where we need to cut where we're spending now, because that's what it'll take. Don't print money up here, we're not Washington DC. We have to have a balanced budget. So that'll be a process that'll start hopefully sooner than later as we begin to explore how we are going to fund these, what we had called Band-Aid approaches previously. Commissioner Ball? Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment that, you know, we're looking at the budget for the entire county, and, and it's hard, and, and it's very emotional, and, and it's very stressful, and it's been going on for months. And tempers tend to get flared up here. And I just want to remind everyone that it's not our job to all agree on the votes. But we at least need to be respectful and professional up here on this dais because we're doing the people's work, and, and that's what they're asking us to do. So I would just ask that we remember why we're sitting up here, who we're sitting up here for, and try to be respectful of one another the best we can. Thank you. Okay. Well, I think that concludes all of our business for this evening. Thank you all for being here, and we will continue to work together moving forward. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.